Good evening, everyone. Welcome, everyone, to this special meeting of City Council to celebrate inaugural ceremonies upon January 2nd, 2024. It's the first time I got to say that out loud. Just briefly, I think we're all in the right place, but this is to celebrate the inauguration of City Council. It's a special meeting of council, and there aren't any opportunities for public comment, although you can speak to us individually afterwards if you'd like. For all of those who are willing and able this evening, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Harris, would you please call the roll of members?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Med?
Here.
Mr. Royo?
Here.
Mr. Klees?
Here.
Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Walsh?
Here.
And President Baker?
Here. Our first rule of business this evening is to approve the minutes of the council committee, our council meeting on December 19th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for those minutes. Any council comments on those? Hearing none. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Med?
Aye.
Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Ms. Klees?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Ms. Walsh?
Aye.
President Baker?
Aye. And now on to business. Mr. Harris, have you received the appropriate certificates of election for the newly-elected city officials?
I have, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Mayor Sarachi, would you please? Thank you very much. And Counselor Arroyo, myself, Counselor Ahmed, and Counselor-elect Hirsch, please come Going to invite the four counselors-elect to join me here at this podium, one by one. We will go through the loyalty oath, and I will begin in alphabetical order with Counselor-Elect So you can stand over here. I think the mic can still pick me up. Would you please raise your right hand? I, Ahmed Ahmed, being—
Aye.
Go ahead.
I, Ahmed Ahmed.
—being duly elected as a member—
Being duly elected as a member.
—of the council of the City of Lancaster—
Of the council of the City of Lancaster.
—do solemnly swear—
Do solemnly swear.
—that I will support, obey, and defend—
That I will support, obey, and defend.
—the Constitution of the United States—
The Constitution of the United States.
—and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania—
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
—and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome. I should have asked if there were any family that wants to join during the swearing. And now I will move to Counselor Baker. And if there's anybody, friends or family, that would like to join you, they may come and stand next to you. Okay. Thank you. Would you please raise your right hand? I, Amanda Baker.
I, Amanda Baker.
—being duly appointed as a member of City Council—
Being duly appointed as a member of City Council.
—of the City of Lancaster.
Of the City of Lancaster.
—do solemnly swear—
Do solemnly swear.
—that I will support, obey, and defend—
That I will support, obey, and defend.
—the Constitution of the United States—
The Constitution of the United States.
—and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania—
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
—and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity—
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I guess we're not really going in alphabetical order, are we? Counselor-elect Arroyo, will you please join me at the podium, and perhaps with Mr. Miles? And of course, your lovely wife. Mr. Miles, I love your red rose, and can you tell me? I like it. Is it lucky? Okay. All right. Mr. Royo, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Jamie Arroyo—
I, Jamie Arroyo.
—being duly appointed—
Being duly appointed.
—as a member of City Council—
As a member of City Council.
—of the City of Lancaster—
Of the City of Lancaster.
—do solemnly swear—
Do solemnly swear.
—that I will support, obey, and defend—
That I will support, obey, and defend.
—the Constitution of the United States—
The Constitution of the United States.
—and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania—
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
—and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity—
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. And last, but certainly not least, Mr. Hirsch, and joining you. Wonderful. Hello. Okay. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, John I. Hirsch—
I, John I. Hirsch.
—being duly elected—
Being duly elected.
—as a member of the council of the City of Lancaster—
As a member of the council of the City of Lancaster.
—do solemnly swear—
Do solemnly swear.
—that I will support, obey, and defend—
That I will support, obey, and defend.
—the Constitution of the United States—
The Constitution of the United States.
—and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania—
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
—and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity—
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations, John. Welcome, everyone, and good evening. Thank you so much for all of you for being here this evening. I just have some brief words, and I mean that. State Representative Smith-Wadeau. Serving on this body over the last four years has been an honor, and getting elected to do it again has been so humbling. When I stood at this podium during my first inauguration in January of 2020, I felt prepared for this role. After all, I had attended these meetings for years. I had learned everything I needed to know about city government, studied ordinances, I talked to thousands of residents. I knew the major issues, and I knew what was going on in the city. But of course, no amount of preparation could have made me ready for what was ahead of me at that time. 2020 and the subsequent years since have found us all living in unprecedented times. I don't know about you, but I'm hoping that 2024 brings us a lot more precedent in times. But here's the thing. No matter what would or wouldn't have happened during those first four years, I would not have been nearly as prepared as I thought I was. Serving as a member of City Council is challenging in ways that I don't think I could have seen or understood four years ago. I've learned so much from my council colleagues, from city staff, from residents that come to meetings. I have gained new perspectives, perspectives that challenge me, and if I'm being honest, sometimes make the decisions that are made on that dais very difficult. But they should be difficult. After all, each of us are simply stewards of this community, and our goal, if we're here for the right reasons, is to make sure Lancaster remains a place to be proud of for generations to come. Those decisions should not be easy. It is the greatest honor of my life to serve my city and my fellow residents. I thank you all for entrusting me again. Here's to another term of difficult decisions and maybe more precedent in times. Thank you.
Good evening and Happy New Year, everybody. Thank you all for being here. I want to thank the people of the City of Lancaster for putting their trust in me to serve them on this council. And further, I would like to thank the employees of the City of Lancaster, city staff that work tirelessly at all hours to fulfill their role, to achieve the many objectives that the city has in front of them. Lastly, and certainly not least, I'd like to thank Adriana and Dante. My wonderful family was so supportive during those long days when I spent thousands of— when I knocked thousands of doors and spent much time talking to voters. I ran for City Council because I believe strongly that to create a community that flourishes economically, socially, and culturally, safe streets are foundational to that flourishing. Streets that are safe and navigable for the most vulnerable among us, from our youngest to our oldest Lancastrians, promote community wealth and culture that all of us can truly share in. Lancaster is a certified welcoming city, but a welcoming city goes even beyond this impressive credential. A welcoming city is a city that creates a culture and character of welcoming. I believe that making streets safer for all of us, making housing and other necessities of life more affordable and accessible are crucial parts of making Lancaster a more welcoming place. A welcoming place is established from the bottom up when citizens fulfill their roles, present and achieve their positive vision for our city's future. This is the vision that I presented on the campaign trail and what I hope our city can bring to fruition. True to its character, Lancaster has welcomed me to this role with open arms, something that I am tremendously grateful for. Whether you were born and raised in the Lancaster community like I was, or a refugee here from thousands of miles away, you are invited to play a role in the City of Lancaster's story. I am grateful and honored to be the first of my generation, known affectionately as Gen Z, to hold a seat on Lancaster City Council. With my youth comes the responsibility to be humble, to listen, and to learn from others. In concluding my remarks, I'm asking all of you to guide me and to share your wisdom as I serve you in this office. That is the true role of a public servant. I invite all of you to take your role and be a part of Lancaster's story and future of flourishing. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, other members of council. My name is Ahmed Ahmed, and I'm a former refugee who had my life's dream of being able to be resettled right here in Lancaster City. And since my family arrived here in 1997, it has been my life's work to repay Lancaster for the safety and the debt that it afforded me and my family as new Americans. This past, actually, December of 2022, I was appointed to City Council and, you know, had some big shoes to fill when our Representative Smith-Wadeau went to Harrisburg. Since then, I've learned so much from my fellow counselors, from city staff, from members of the public, from knocking on doors, and it reaffirms that I belong here and I am here to stay. So thank you all, and I look so forward to serving this city. Good evening, everyone. First off, I'd like to thank the residents of Lancaster City for the opportunity to get to do this again. It's truly, truly an honor and a privilege. Thank you to my wife, Lynette, and my son, Miles, who are both here tonight. A lot has changed since the last four years, since we did this last time with the little guy joining us. And thank you to my fellow counselors, Mayor Sarachi, and city staff, who all work hard to make tough decisions as we, you know, really guide the city into the future. Today marks a pivotal moment as we gather for a new era of progress and unity in our city. I stand before you, humbled and honored, to serve as a representative of the people committed to fostering positive change in hopes that our city can see the fruits of our hard work, with equitable economic development, a community that is welcoming and safe for everyone, and a financially sound government. The past four years have been, like, unlike any other in my lifetime. I ran for City Council in 2019 in hopes to serve our community, but I had no idea what was to come in the years ahead. And while it has been challenging, it has been the right time to serve. The past four years highlighted the importance of good and sound leadership at the forefront of our city. It put a spotlight on the need for inclusion, transparency, and investment. And while I'm proud of our accomplishments, there is much more work to do. Our Home Rule Commission is exploring the opportunity to write a new and evolved charter, and there are other challenges like housing and climate action that still lay ahead of us. And with all that, I'm still very optimistic about our city's future. Our new comprehensive plan will guide us, but I, we, are ready to roll up our sleeves with the help of every one of you tonight and get the work done. Together, we will build a Lancaster city that stands as a beacon of inspiration for all of Pennsylvania, a city where the dreams of all residents can flourish. Thank you, and may our shared vision guide us to a brighter future for Lancaster City. Thank you.
Counselor Ahmed, Counselor Arroyo, join us back in the dais. So as we welcome new council members and returning council members, we are also going to take a moment tonight to say goodbye and thank you to Katie Walsh. Katie has served as the Chair of the Department—oh, I'm sorry—the Chair of Public Works and worked closely with Stephen Campbell, the department director, who unfortunately could not be here tonight, and has asked some really good questions while serving on council. And I always appreciate that the role of council is really to ask those kinds of questions. And Katie, you have done your job very well, and we appreciate your service to the City of Lancaster. With that, I wanted to provide tonight, on behalf of the city and City Council, a plaque presented to Catherine Walsh in appreciation for her service as City Councilor, February 8th, 2022, to January 2nd, 2024. Lancaster salutes you. Thank you. And they're invited to say a few.
Just a few words as I depart. Thank you, Mayor, Council, city staff, and city residents who are here this evening. As I exit my role as a City Councilwoman, I'm filled with gratitude and reflection. Serving this community has been an honor. Together, we have tackled challenges, celebrated victories, and worked towards a healthier future. I like to think of Lancaster as a tapestry woven with the threads of diverse voices, aspirations, and dreams. It has been my privilege to be a part of shaping policies that enhance our collective well-being. Please remember, our strength lies in unity, our resilience in facing adversity, and our hope of building a welcoming community. Thank you for allowing me to be a steward of our city's future. I wish all the best for the incoming and City Council members and the future of our city. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Walsh. At this time, our inaugural ceremony is concluding. I will be appointing Counselor Faith Craig as acting president to conduct our organizational meeting, which will follow immediately. At this point, I will hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Our inaugurational ceremony is adjourned. We will do a little reorganization and then begin our reorganizational meeting. At this time, I'll invite Mr. John Hirsch, Counselor Hirsch, to join us at the dais. Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to call the organizational meeting to order. And, Mr. Harris, could you do the roll call of members, please?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Med?
Here.
Mr. Royo?
Here.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Klees?
Here.
Ms. Diaz?
Here.
Mr. Hirsch?
Here.
And Acting President Craig?
Here.
And now I'll hear a nomination for the election of Council President.
Counselor Craig, I'd like to make a nomination for Counselor Baker to assume the role of Council President.
And I will second that. And we'll do a voice. Mr. Harris, could you—
We can do a roll call, Madam—
Yes.
Mr. Med?
Aye.
Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Mr. Klees?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch? And, Ms. Baker?
Aye.
Thank you. Now that President Baker has been reelected to the presidency by voice vote, we'll have remarks from our newly-elected, returning president.
Thank you so much, Counselor Craig. I am incredibly grateful to all the members of council for the faith that you have put on in me to be the council president. I don't take those duties lightly. I've been told that I am good at it, whatever that means. I do have a passion for running a good meeting, so at least there's that, if nothing else. I have been able to think a little bit about the assignments for committees of council, which as president I am able to select, and I would like to name the following chairs of the committees, and I will be presenting Mr. Harris with a full list of committee members after this meeting. Charing the Personnel Committee, Counselor Klees. Charing Community Planning, Counselor Craig. Charing Public Works, Counselor Hirsch. Charing the Finance Committee, Counselor Arroyo. Charing Economic Development, Counselor Ahmed. And Charing Public Safety, Counselor Diaz. At this time, I would also like to name a vice president to serve in my place should I not be able to lead a meeting. I would like to name Counselor Arroyo as my vice president. And as we begin this new chapter, I would like to thank Counselor Craig for her service in serving as my vice president. in serving as my vice president previously. Her support has meant the world to me during my time on council, so thank you very much. At this time, concluding our business in the reorganizational meeting, I will hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Counselor Craig, if you would. We are adjourned. Thank you so much.